Colorado for September ninth, two thousand nineteen. If you would please stand with me as we pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Zachary Urban.
Present.
David Keeter.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
President.
Janice Hoppe.
Present.
Leah Dozelman.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Larry Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Davis has excused herself for this evening, and we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do not have any proclamations and ceremonies this evening, nor do we have minutes for approval. I would ask for approval of the agenda, including any changes or anything to pull off of the consent agenda. Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. I'd like to pull item one B off the consent agenda for separate discussion.
We will pull item one B off of the consent agenda and consider that separately. And Mr. Dahl, did you have anything you wish to speak to with respect to the agenda?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. We have an executive session set for later in the evening following the study session, and because under the charter, executive sessions can only be convened during a regular or special meeting of the council instead of at the end of your present agenda adjourned to special study session, I'll be asking you take that you simply recess, and the chair can recess the meeting, so that you can do the study session. At the conclusion of the study session, I'll ask that you reconvene the regular meeting simply for the purpose of taking the executive session motion. We'll do the executive session, come out of the executive session, back into regular meeting, and then adjourn. But I wanted to make that note, that instead of adjourning to special study session, we'll be recessing to special study session in order to accommodate that executive session. Thank you.
We will now move to our citizens' right to speak. Any citizen who wishes to speak to the council on any item not on the agenda may come to the podium and speak for three minutes. And at the end of, because we had a study session at the end of our regular meeting, we will take study session public comment at the beginning of our meeting now. So I have one person signed up to speak. It says Jeff Schader, and I think perhaps we'll call him Sheriff. Sheriff Schader, if you'd like to come, and please give us your first name and last name, and an address for the record, and then continue.
Good evening, councilors. Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Jeff Schrader. I am the Jefferson County Sheriff. Address is two hundred Jefferson County Parkway and Golden, eight oh four oh one. I'm here tonight to ask that this council endorse, and each of you as individuals endorse, Jefferson County ballot issue one A, which is a, in effect, a table timeout. The reason that I am asking for your support of that is for purely public safety reasons. One of the hardest-hit issues moving forward, and as I've been noticed by the county manager, is that my budget, and I can also speak a little bit to the district attorney's budget, will both be hit amongst the hardest. The net effect of the budget cuts that are expected in Jefferson County towards the sheriff's office will amount up to about ten million dollars. That being experienced within the next sixteen months. And what that means, in practical terms, for me and ultimately for people, the citizens of Wheat Ridge, and especially for the folks who protect the citizens of Wheat Ridge, the Wheat Ridge Police Department, is that the beginning of this coming year, in 2020, I'm going to have to close one of the five housing floors of the jail. And in the beginning of 2021, I will have to close another, a net of six hundred and forty beds. When we operate at eighty-five percent of capacity, according to National Institute of Correction guidelines, in practical terms, that means a reduction of inmates of about five hundred and fifty. There is no way to get there but to do two things. And at the beginning of this coming year, I will enact the utilization of a chief judge order that permits the reduction of sentenced inmates to the county jail by fifty percent. And then I will also have to start refusing to accept a number of prisoners, starting at petty offenses, municipal offenses, and up to and including class-four felonies. So not just misdemeanor cases, and people who are in both of those categories, whether they're sentenced or whether we're going to have to refuse acceptance, there will be multiple DUI offenders in those categories if that population were today. And again, if we are touching on class-four felonies, there are some persons' crimes that would even also be affected. The district attorney's office is going to be cut in their budget in that same time period by one and a half million dollars. There is nowhere in the district attorney's budget to cut that would amount to that without touching on lawyers and investigators. And if that is the case, it will in fact change public safety policy throughout Jefferson County. So for those practical reasons, I am asking that this council, and each of you as councilors individually, support that. I would ask that you go to keepjeffcosafe.com if you need to learn more about that. Otherwise, the campaign, Keep Jeff Go Safe, is going to be forwarding information to the city council and asking that they pass a resolution in that regard, and I would ask for your support in that. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Sheriff Schader. That is the only speaker that I have signed up to speak. If you haven't signed up but would like to speak on public comment on any item not on the agenda, you may come forward and do so now. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay, we'll close our public comment on the regular agenda, and I'm going to open it up for a special study session. And my first speaker is Russ Newton.
I think, Mr. Mayor, he signed up probably to do the actual presentation, which will be later.
Okay. Very good. Then is there anyone here who has not signed up to speak under our special study session? That's a mouthful. Public comment, you may come forward and speak now. Okay, we'll close public comment on that, and go to consent agenda item number one. Mr. Pond, would you please introduce the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to present consent agenda item A, motion to cancel study session of the Wheat Ridge City Council on November fourth, two thousand nineteen, due to municipal election. Item C, number forty-nine dash two thousand nineteen, resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Mountain View regarding stormwater drainage improvements. And item D, resolution number fifty dash two thousand nineteen, resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between West Metro Fire Protection District and the City of Wheat Ridge concerning DUI blood draw services.
Thank you. And a motion, if I may have a motion on agenda item one A, C, and D, please.
Yes, I move to approve consent agenda items A, C, and D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe was the second.
Hoppe, okay, thank you.
Mr. Pond, would you please introduce agenda item number one B, please?
Yes, item number one B, resolution number forty-eight dash two thousand nineteen, resolution concerning the acquisition and acceptance of private property for the purpose of constructing, installing, maintaining, and using public improvements for improving the intersections of West Fifty-second Avenue, Ward Road, and Ridge Road, Ward Road, and the pedestrian bridge-associated plaza areas and the multi-use trail by negotiation and voluntary purchase and authorizing such action as necessary to accomplish said purposes.
Thank you. May I have a motion on agenda item number B, one B?
I move to approve resolution number forty-eight, two thousand nineteen, a resolution concerning the acquisition and acceptance of private property for the purpose of constructing, installing, maintaining, and using public improvements for improving the intersections of West Fifty-second Avenue, Ward Road, and Ridge Road, Ward Road, and the pedestrian bridge-associated plaza areas and the multi-use trail by negotiation and voluntary purchase and authorizing such action as necessary to accomplish said purposes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Hoppe. Do we have discussion on the motion? Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We sort of just touched on eminent domain in some of one of our previous meetings just recently, and I am assuming that the part of that last sentence that says, "and authorizing such action as necessary to accomplish said purposes," would also include invoking eminent domain without coming to council. Am I correct in that assumption?
It's not. It would have to be specifically spelled out, and probably maybe Mr. Dahl, our city attorney, could explain that.
That's correct. If you're going to authorize eminent domain, the resolution has to actually say so. So per frankly, direction I think we'd gotten from council much earlier, that you wanted to reserve the choice on eminent domain until all the other efforts had been exhausted. This authorizes all those other efforts, which are negotiation, but stop short on eminent domain. We'll have to come back for that.
And I'm not saying I would not vote for eminent domain. I'm just saying that I want to make sure council doesn't abdicate that responsibility. And if that does not include eminent domain, then I have no objection to the motion as stated.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Ms. Hoppe.
I just wanted to also clarify that in the memo, it does state that council is informed on the right-of-way acquisition process. Now, council's direction, this resolution does not authorize use of eminent domain for our citizens out there that don't necessarily have a pocket. It is in black and white for us.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. We will go to agenda item number two. Ms. Hoppe, would you please introduce item number two?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number two, council bill number thirteen dash two thousand nineteen, ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning procedures for protests under section five point ten of the Home Rule Charter, case number Z O A dash nineteen dash zero three. At issue, the city charter includes a provision allowing for a protest to be filed against a zone change request. If a protest is received, the rezoning ordinance must be approved by a three-quarter vote of the entire council, six votes. The purpose of this code amendment is to clarify the protest procedure for rezoning decisions and to enact a delay in the public hearing in the event a protest is received.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask the clerk for an ordinance number.
This will be ordinance number sixteen seventy-three.
Thank you. Mr. Pond, do we have a presentation on this?
Yes.
Not Mr. Pond, Mr. Goff. I guess we're juxtaposing you again today, so.
We do. Back to our city attorney, Mr. Dahl.
Okay, Mr. Dahl.
Thank you very much, council. Council has discussed this in a study session, and this ordinance does not amend the charter, but it more fully implements the charter around protest procedures. And I think I've made clear in the materials here, but I'll say it out loud, that the council doesn't have the ability, of course, to amend the charter, but it always has the ability to implement the charter. And it has done so in numerous provisions throughout the code book on various subjects. This particular ordinance addresses the process around protests, which right now simply involve people filing a protest, and often that comes in during the hearing. The charter doesn't specify when. It's by the hearing, is I think what the charter language is. So that raises a number of concerns. And you most recently had a couple of rezonings with protests, and so there's been recent experience with the protest process. And as a result of the study session, you directed me to bring forth an ordinance, which I have drafted, and I do want to make a couple of notes about that ordinance. First and foremost, the proposed motion, the recommended motion in the staff report is the first reading version. I apologize for that. I've given councilmember Hoppe, who I think is the, would be the maker of the motion, the second reading version. So just so when, as and if we get to a motion, you'll see it's slightly different, and that's because the first reading motion stayed in the council action form. That's my error. Going to the ordinance itself, I want to make a few points about it and raise a couple of things that I think you should consider as additional changes to this ordinance. To begin with, there are three places in the code now that refer to the right of protest: private rezoning, which is by far the most frequent, rezoning initiated by the city, and rezoning on planned developments. And each one of them refers to the right of protest and either does a lengthy or a short job of describing the charter process. Just organizationally, so you understand, this ordinance is written to detail the process in one place, and I've attached it to the private rezoning section in the code since that's the most frequent use of rezoning, therefore the most recent opportunity for protest. And then basically cross-references in the other two places. So we don't have three different ways the protest procedure is described in the code book, and there's one way it's described, and that's, it defers over to twenty-six dash one twelve C seven, which is the private rezoning. So that's just organizational. The ordinance itself, you'll notice, the new material, of course, is in all caps, and it has the community development staff, if there's a protest, reviewing it to confirm that the requisite number of signers, you know, the twenty percent on any side, basically. Y'all are familiar with how that works. But it's, that has been met. And that has consistently been the job of the community development department, and there have been times when protests have been received that the twenty percent hasn't been reached. And sometimes there needs to be some analysis. In my experience, meetings have been recessed for a few minutes while they go figure that out. And that, you want to make sure you do that, because of course it has a voting impact on the council, and you want to make sure you know whether that's true. As written, the ordinance allows the mayor to declare recess, so that the hearing can be continued to allow that to happen. If the community development staff determines that protest, the requisite number of signers aren't there, the owners of property aren't there, then you're done, and you go on. If they determine that the requisite number of signatures are there, then presently, as the ordinance reads, the ordinance reads that the council shall act to continue the hearing to the next regular or special meeting. This is as a result of the discussion you had in study session, which I expect you probably talk more fully about here in a minute. But during that debate, or the discussion during study session, the policy issue you raised for me to address was when we do get a protest, that's sometimes a surprise, and it's a surprise to us, surprise to the citizens, and it changes the dynamics, and we want to be able to have the opportunity to not have to make the decision that night. And so therefore, it lists this continuance. The next section E repeats the language right out of the charter about the twenty percent. But then it says that that twenty, that that twenty percent extends to property owners within a hundred feet of the subject property, including those located diagonally adjacent to the corners, as shown on a diagram, which we're going to look at in a minute. That came up in study session, too, because we had little diagrams, and there's the missing corner that can actually touch the property be rezoned, and there's just no opportunity, or at least it's not clear. So let's actually go to the very next page, or the diagrams, and I'll take you through those briefly. Lauren Mickleact did a wonderful job at rendering this in a way I never could have, and I want to give her credit. First diagram just shows the property be rezoned. Second one shows, okay, the rear of the property. And you see there's an arc, which is a hundred feet out from the corner. So in no case are we including property that's greater than a hundred feet, but we're including the people that are missing on that corner. Same thing's true in letters C and D, the sides. You get the corner. Letter E across the street. Letter F, a kind of an irregular side. And so I think that illustrates really well the intention, at least, of including the diagonal properties. Having said that, we go back to the ordinance itself, picking up another issue, which is, all right, if there's a protest, when can it be rescinded, or can it be? And what I have written here is the process that I advised you was applicable in the absence of any charter statement or ordinance statement to the contrary, which is once a protest is filed, it can be rescinded by the maker of the protest. And I kind of wrote out how that would work, if you're going to put it in the code. So it can be rescinded only in a written instrument, signed by the same persons as the original, and presented prior to final council action on the matter. That's what actually happened, if you might recall. I want to make clear that there was a fair amount of debate around that. Not everyone liked that rule, but there was no written rule, so that's the one that got followed. If you were to write the rule in other ways beyond how I've written it, you have some choices. Certainly, you can say, a protest once filed and determined to be sufficient by the community development staff may not be rescinded, period. You have the right to do that. You have another door, probably, which is a protest once filed can be rescinded prior to the hearing, but not, you know, prior to the hearing at which action would take, prior to the hearing, as opposed to right now, how I've written it, is prior to final action. I don't have a preference. I wrote it the way I did because that's the rule that was followed the last time, but you've got a couple of the choices in terms of timing, all the way to, once you file it, you're done. It's always true, whether or not you want to rescind it. So there's, that is a potential amendment that you could make to the ordinance. There's one last amendment, and then I'm happy to take questions. That's really at the beginning of the ordinance, and that is when protests must be filed. And there has, over the years, been concern about protests coming in during the hearing, and the council has permitted that in past years, and that's generally been, that's been the rule. And I've had to opine on that a number of times, and I said, that's been your practice. The charter doesn't require that. The charter says by the hearing, and it is within your authority to say what that means. And you can say that that means, and if you were to do it, you'd put it as a new letter A, probably, that it means prior to the commencement of the hearing on the matter. The policy issue around that, which is for you to decide, but I want to articulate, is that the, if you were to know that there is a protest at the beginning of the hearing, then you know what your considerations are. It's not a surprise to council later in the hearing, it's not a surprise to the residents or the other applicant, or the opponents, or anyone that's come to the meeting. They know now what the rules are. That's analogous, and I'm almost done with this report, and thanks for your patience, but that's analogous to the staff at the beginning of a rezoning hearing saying, okay, I want to introduce into the record the copies of the staff report, the case file, et cetera, et cetera. The notice and posting has been accomplished, so there's a jurisdiction to hear this case. It's kind of a jurisdictional, here are the rules for this case before we start taking testimony. So you may well want to include that in your discussion here tonight. That's what I've got to tell you, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Before we go to questions from the councilors, I would like to give the public an opportunity to speak on this, and I have a sign-in sheet. When I call your name, if you would please come to the podium, adjust the microphone, give us your first name and last name, and spell your last name for the record, and give us your address. And we will start with Megan Schleicher and Dorothy Archer on deck. And forgive me if I mispronounce your name.
I understand. I tried to convince my husband, Kelly, was the way to go. He didn't agree. Megan Schleicher, and my address is one zero three one five West Thirty-third Avenue. Should I go ahead and start?
Please continue.
Okay. So my concerns with this, first of all, I agree with the intent behind what you're trying to do here, is clarify the protest process and make sure that there's certain rules we all agree to work with in. The challenge is, as being a normal citizen who has to become an expert overnight to be involved in these issues, really are a disadvantage to, whether it, for rezoning purposes, be developers who have staff who are experts in these processes and know exactly what to do and when and how to time everything. The ability to obtain signatures, to actually get a protest, might be a simple case, it seems, from what I'm reading here, of just one signature, but it also might be a significant amount of signatures with neighbors you might be close with or you might not be close with. And so limiting the timeframe even further for citizen participation in this process can be a real challenge. And I know the fear is, is that citizens are going to purposefully delay this process, at least that was what was discussed in the zoning commission meeting that I attended about this. But citizens have children, citizens are working, citizens are doing all sorts of things. They're not sitting deviously planning, how do we keep delaying this process? I know from personal experience recently. And then the second item is, is that I had said in the zoning commission meeting that I had concerns about the fact that if you do make a mistake as a citizen in obtaining the signatures, maybe the hundred feet falls on someone's property line, but it doesn't appear to take up the entire piece of property, that are they considered part of the twenty percent, or are they not considered part of the twenty percent? It's really challenging to figure out where that line falls and who's included in the group. The zoning, or not the zoning, but the development office has very graciously offered to be of assistance when we need assistance. But again, it's all about timing and being able to act quickly enough and figure out answers to all of this. Literally trying to determine who to even call and search the websites and figure out all the answers to these questions has been really challenging for those of us with recent concerns about zoning changes. It's been difficult. So I would like to propose, the wording in this, if we do implement some type of wording, include something to the effect of some ability to correct an error, or at least get assistance, not for names and addresses, which was interpreted somehow in the last not for names and addresses, which was interpreted somehow in the last concern that I had with the zoning commission, but for knowing which addresses should be included in that 100-foot area. So those are my, my concerns and thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dorothy Archer and Ihor Figlis on deck.
My name is Dorothy Archer, 3640 Marshall Street. And I'd like to donate my three minutes to Ihor Figlis, please.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ihor Figlis and Rachel Hulteen on deck.
Good evening. My name is Ihor Figlis. I live at 9775 West 36th Avenue. I'm here to speak in opposition to this proposed ordinance. At best, this ordinance is unnecessary. At worst, it is erroneous and seriously subverts the intent of the Wheatridge City Charter. Specifically, in section one, paragraph D of attachment one, which is page 39 of the agenda, it requires the city council to continue the hearing on a zoning change upon receipt of a protest. The Wheatridge City Charter states specifically that a protest to zoning changes shall be submitted to the city council no later than the hearing on the proposed amendment. This language is very specific. There is no requirement for advanced submission, not one day, not one week, but at the hearing. I believe there is a reason for this specific language and that reason is to prevent any potential undue influence on someone who files a protest. Requiring the city council to continue the hearing in the event of a protest is akin to requiring a two-week prior submission, thereby creating an advanced submission requirement for such a process. This paragraph actually subverts the intent of the city charter. The submission of a protest does not create a pressing need and does not change the case. This being a quasi judicial matter, the city council is prohibited from further input on this matter. The only thing that can change during the ensuing delay is the withdrawal of a written protest. And this rule simply opens the door to an unscrupulous person who might wish to influence the protest process. If anything, the city council should adopt an ordinance requiring the council to vote on a rezoning to which a protest has been submitted at the hearing without allowing for a continuation. As I stated, a delay opens the door to undue and unsavory influence on a protester. I can tell you that I have actually heard someone express such misgivings about filing a protest. Given the zealousness with which a current applicant is pursuing their development proposal in the city, it is not difficult to imagine such a scenario. Next, there's a glaring error in the diagrams on figure 26-11.2, specifically panel E. In essence, the city charter creates a 100-foot zone of potential protest around the property to be rezoned, across and diagonally. Taking a street into account only separates out the side with the street by whatever is the street width. There is no limitation, 50 feet, 100 feet, whatever. It just simply states as if that street wasn't there. It does not change the corners of the protest zones. The corners should remain. And there is precedent, land use case WZ 19-18-09 in August 2018, the city accepted and verified a legal protest to a proposed rezoning of 9800 West 38th Avenue from a Linda Ibach who resides at 9785 West 38th. That property is located across the street diagonally from the property considered for rezoning. There was no challenge to her protest, no, and no questioning of the legitimacy of her right to this protest. And I agree with the previous speaker that the city should publish addresses of all persons who are eligible to file a legal protest or rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Hulteen.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Rachel Hulteen and I live at 4690 Balsam Street. I'd like to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance tonight. And I've got a couple of pretty specific comments about it. This, this ordinance has come forward in part from some, some comments I had this spring and then the, the process that Mr. Dahl explained. And when I first came forward and suggested we look at our process for rezoning hearings that have been protested, it was really motivated around listening to comments in this room the preceding months around the desire for more notice, transparency, predictability, and inclusion in important processes. And I believe that that is something everybody in our city and everybody who represents our city would like. When, when a rezoning is protested, it is because there's something about that, that proposal that is requiring additional attention. And it is important enough to our citizens to take the time. The first speaker really talked about the duress that they have to actually get that petition together and to get it together correctly. If, if they've gone through that process because the project's important enough to them, then I think it's important enough to our whole community to pay closer attention to it. So the intention is to allow us all that additional time. What we've seen play out in this room in the last year is a protest also changing the dynamic on the dais. And we've seen that a protest actually has, has kept the petitioner and the citizens from getting the full attention of the council because the protest has created tensions. So I think giving time for everybody involved to walk in the room on the same page is, again, to the advantages of the citizens who want predictability and transparency. What I wasn't expecting were all of the other nuances that were fleshed out during the study session and the diligence by staff. Confusion that Mr. Matthews pulled forward about defining the area protest not being well-defined. I think, again, what we'd like is clarity and understanding about exactly what's included so that there is no surprise. If, if we've got citizens that are petitioning for protest, they should have accurate and the same information. So I'm grateful that this process has daylighted things like that, as well as verification of the protest and Mr. Dahl's comments about rescinding the protest. You know, these are all areas that currently are not clear in our code of laws. So I appreciate Mr. Figlis's comments about the charter's intention of a protest actually being voted on that night because the time delay could open up, you know, whatever undue influences he was talking about. But I think at the end of the day, when we talk about our, our community as a whole and the integrity of our representatives, what, what we really value is predictability and inclusion and transparency. So the pressure to act quickly enough is really on the petitioners. And I think once they've done that hard work to successfully protest a rezoning, then I think there should be adequate time for everybody involved to understand what the situation is. You guys, as you know, vote on a lot of things every other week and most citizens don't pay attention to most of those things. A protest is a signal to pay closer attention and I think it's just fair for us all to have time to understand what that is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all of the speakers that I have signed up to speak. If you haven't signed up or would like to speak, you may come forward now. And please adjust the microphone, give us your first name and last name and your address, please.
Odarka Figlis, F-I-G-L-I-S, 10580 West 34th Avenue. Okay, I, I will first respond to some of the comments that were made by Ms. Hulteen. She talks about predictability, stability, integrity. I think that these proposals, this proposal to delay the hearing or to delay the vote by two weeks after a protest is submitted, actually works against all of those. And I think they will be bringing the integrity and the predictability of the city in question. Everyone should be, developers, anybody that's involved and anybody that's interested in what rezoning is going to be, should anticipate the possibility of a protest. That's really clearly stated in our charter. And the comments about a protest changing the dynamic on the dais and creating tension on the dais, I don't understand that because you shouldn't be talking about all this between yourselves anyway and you should be deciding on the merits of the case and not on some tension that is created by a protest. So I think what we need to look at is not what happens today or tomorrow, but what happens in our worst-case scenario. What if by some chance a corrupt council gets elected? Is it really that hard to imagine that in the intervening two-week period, there could be undue influence through the police power of this city to influence the protester to withdraw their protest? You know, there already is a perception unfortunately among some people that they are concerned about filing protests and I've heard that from sitting in the back of the room, that they wait to see if somebody else files a protest so they don't have to put their name out there because they're concerned about any repercussions. And I think it's really important for people to be able to put in the protest by the close of the public hearing because really sometimes you have to come in and listen to what the proposal is and hear the developer's presentation. Maybe you hear something in that that tells you, oh, this is not the right thing for me. You can't know that in advance. So we need to have the opportunity for people to do it at the last minute. You know, it's also very difficult for people to come and then, you know, present and be, it's an emotional issue for people if they're coming in and speaking against a rezoning in their dis, in their area. And it's very hard then to get people to come again and then to really trust what it is that is happening behind the scenes. It's just too much question then of, is there a backdoor or backroom deal being made? It's just, it just kind of opens everything up to too many questions and I don't think we need that. I think we need to stick with integrity. I do like the proposal of saying if there's a protest, vote that day and make it really clear. Now, the other thing is that it could be really unfair to the developer as well. So let's say that you do have a legal protest, but it's a great development, he's going to get eight votes. Well, now you've made him wait another two weeks and with all that uncertainty added to it as well. I think it's just not fair to anybody. I don't see how this opens up the process. I just think it clouds everything up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has not signed up to speak on this who would like to come forth and speak at this time? Okay, I don't see anyone, so we will close the public comment portion of this item and move to questions from council. Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to comment on the same thing that Mr. Figlis did, is that it appears to me that the way the charter was written, that they were extending the property line 100, across whatever street width was there. And this diagram's a little misleading because it doesn't necessarily show property lines lining up across the street, which is the norm. I mean, in most subdivisions, property lines are invariably equally distributed on the length of the street. And so what could happen in this case is you've got, if you, if you're rezoning two properties that are being combined or whatever, the properties right across the street would coincide and even though someone is sort of diametrically opposite the front corner, they're just, they're, they're, they are not considered even though on the other side of the street, the zone of consideration extends 100 feet out. And so I believe that that, those arcs should start from the other property line and go out 100 feet also. And that would in essence then, your arc starts this way and then goes over across the street and then goes back down. And it's just like the street didn't exist, which I think was the intent of the original charter.
Mr. Dahl, would you like to respond?
It may be useful for Mr. Johnson to comment on that, but I, I see the logic of that, honestly. The, the intention, I believe from reading the charter, is that the, the, the street's not there and so the people across the street get the same rights that the people behind the property would get or on either side of the property. And, and I, I don't have the, a concern with, with that. It, it, you're, you're creating the same kind of image across the street as you are as if the street weren't there. And, and I don't, Mr. Johnson might want to comment, but I, that, that, I think that gives you parity and, and I think that, that's, looks good to me, but I'm, I'm not the, the technical person.
Mr. Johnson, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's, there's an argument to be made for either case. The, the reason why we drew the exhibit in E the way we did was we were reading the, the language in E, which is at, at the paragraph below the images directly opposite across the street as being meaningful, different, slightly different language than, than what was used in A, B, A through D. So that's the reason that it was drawn differently because we, we thought that to be meaningful language, but.
I, I can understand that. I'm just saying that when you look at the other three corners or four of the property or whatever, there's a, there's an extension sideways around that corner. And I believe that in order to be consistent, it should be applied in image E there also across the street. Because in essence, what they're just telling you is the property, the street doesn't exist. You know, they're just extending that property line out and all of a sudden you're on one side of the street, you're going out 100 feet and down and on the other side, you're not.
I definitely think the council's got authority to, to articulate that because very much your job is to implement the charter. And where the charter is not clear or needs to be implemented, that's your authority. You do it by ordinance all the time. And, and I, I believe you'd have the authority to, to do that and to make that diagram E look very much like diagram B, for example.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver?
I, I would support adding that arc on the, on those corners. I'm curious, how does this, this map change or not change with the notification process we have at the beginning of a rezone petition when a developer comes in and I know that it's 100 feet? Is it the same map? Because it, it seems like we should sort of match up this 100-foot notification, right? Does that make sense where?
With our, with our other public notifications for the meeting, is it, that we're using the same logic?
Yes, because I've, I've, we've been talking about this 100, people within 100 feet. And I know that, that we've heard people come in and say, I wasn't notified. And I'm wondering if they fall in these sort of strange pla, you know, not strange places. The, yeah.
The, the notice area.
The diagonal, I don't know what.
Ken can correct me, but the notice area for rezonings is 600 feet?
It's 600.
Yeah, so it's much larger.
No, 600 for a neighborhood meeting and, and 200 or 300, depending on the type of land use application. It's for, it's, it's a little different on different applications.
Oh, okay.
It's just immediately adjacent for the, for the purpose of subdivision plots. So the, the 600 feet is for the neighborhood meeting, which is the requirement to have a neighborhood meeting before you can submit application.
Okay.
But to answer the question about how we draw the map, there's, there's no, it's, it's basically a diameter from the perimeter of the property. So it would be very similar to, for example, B, except you'd be doing it around the whole, the whole property.
So it is taking into account all those corner lines?
And the diagonal, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Keter?
So to, for the question that was raised with the first, with the first comment, am I right in understanding that, that if, if, you know, a square foot corner of the property falls within any of these shaded areas, then that property owner has, is included in terms of the, the protest?
Yes, although that property owner has to, the amount of property has to be 20%.
Total, so that's.
So, you know, if you've only got a little bit of property, you, you contribute, but you don't contribute much to the 20%, but you help.
So it's a, it's a little bit of a double-edged sword. You can make it broader to include more people, but then the num, then the percentage of people that, the number of actual people that you have to.
Yes.
Get involved with can also go, go up exponentially.
I think that's exactly right. The, the, you need to get 20%, or the owners signing up 20% of these shaded areas that are shown here. And if the shaded areas don't have the arcs, then it's less area. So including the diagonals to include people and give them rights means that the, the 20% number in the charter, you can't change because that's in the charter. So you're interpreting the charter to say. So you're interpreting the charter to say, it really means these shaded areas, which are larger than just rectangles. They have curves on them, which are bigger, fair enough. As was pointed out, there may well have been a case where that rule was applied. But you've got to get 20% of that area. Now that we've defined the area by shaded... by shading it, then you've got to get owners at 20% of that.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this question's for the city attorney. The charter says that this letter protest must be submitted by the hearing date or by the... what we presume to be the end of the hearing possibly. And so this amendment, we can't necessarily say that the letter protest has to receive by first reading and change the charter in that way. So how can we... how can we then conversely change the interpretation to basically, as Ihor Figless pointed out, that this basically creates a third hearing of sorts that extends that process? So doesn't that sort of impede someone's right to a speedy trial, if it were, in this process? And by making us use the word shall in here, that it shall be postponed, isn't that impeding on whether it be the applicant's rights or the citizen's rights?
Possibly. I think there's two parts to that question. Let me answer the easy one first, which is when the charter says by the hearing, I'm... it's up to you, and you're the ones who get to decide what by the hearing means in terms of, does that need to be by the... you know, just like you've got to sign up to testify here by the hearing. And you've... and a number... you know, is that before that hearing commences that night? And that's legitimate for you to say that's what that means as opposed to before the gavel goes down on the end of the hearing, which has been sort of the practice. So you clearly have that authority. Where there is a mandatory continuance, then while the hearing got opened, it got continued. And so, yeah, you've satisfied the letter of the by the hearing, but I recognize that you haven't probably satisfied the spirit, and I recognize that, of getting that in before the hearing, and now we do the hearing as opposed to waiting. So I think if the hearing's opened, you require that be submitted before the hearing's open. It's submitted, the hearing's open, and there's an immediate motion to continue. You've satisfied the letter of the charter requirement, but I am the first to admit, you have opened it up for people being concerned that now the hearing's much later.
So but in that instance, if I were to file a letter of protest causing the hearing to be postponed, and then the next day I rescind that letter, and then because the hearing is now still open for the next meeting, I come in and file another one, which causes it to be postponed. So in what way does this end?
Well, I agree. You clearly need a bright line test for when the door closes on the eligibility for protests to come in, and that's good for everyone. You know, you really need that bright line. And if you say by the hearing, it's the begin... before the hearing is commenced, the evening it is scheduled or something like that, then you have that hard line. That's one thing you need to clearly do, and if we need to make it more clear, I think that we absolutely should. The second question is, all right, then what? When there's one in and it's satisfied the bright line, what's the procedure we're going to follow? And I think if you open the hearing, you can... and then continue it, you get by, on terms of the letter of the law, the ability to have the whole hearing later. But I get it, that it... that doing so is a process that raises other problems, I don't think, under that scenario, that you open up the opportunity for another set of protests if you're clear about when the bright line to submit them is on that agenda item.
But if... excuse me if I can... but if the city charter says that it's allowed and we disallow it, then we would possibly be sued because we didn't allow it because the way the charter is currently written, there is that vagueness to it. So I...
Yeah, I mean, it's your job to make sure there isn't vagueness in the ordinance. And what I'm saying is that if there's a bright line that it has to be submitted before the commencement of the hearing, that's the bright line for the submission of protests. Then you commence the hearing and you have a process that requires that the hearing be immediately continued. You still have a hearing that's going to take place two weeks from now, that the voting requirement for which is six votes. So if the intention of the charter is that it be a six-vote hearing, that has been preserved. I absolutely get it that you've got an intervening two weeks and there are the, you know, the list of, gosh, what could happen issues. I think that those, while they may well have public policy weight that convince you, you shouldn't have a continuance like that. But I think you've satisfied the charter. You have raised other concerns.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe?
My question's for Mr. Dahl. Is it... to clarify then the issue that Councilmember Urban was just discussing, could there be an addition to the ordinance that says, once the hearing is continued, no other protests may be submitted?
Sure, I would wrap that into the hard line, bright line test we're evolving for when the deadline for here... for protests being filed is. Because once you have that, per my dialogue with Councilmember Urban, you're done. And the fact that the hearing's been continued doesn't mean additional protests come in. And you should probably articulate that, if that's your intention. I think that is how this is presently written because, again, it came out of the study session where those points were directed to be written down.
Do you have a follow-up, Ms. Hoppe, quick?
I do. So would it... prior to the initial commencement of the hearing, would solve that initial commencement of the hearing?
Yeah.
Meaning that once it's continued...
Yeah, a continued hearing, yeah.
Now it's continued, it's no longer the initial commencement.
Yeah, a continued hearing didn't commence on the two weeks later continued date. It commenced when the mayor said, okay, I'm going to open the hearing on the XYZ project and gavel that open. I see that now we're making a record because the bright line test says we've got to take note of any protests that have been filed. Yes, I see there has been one filed. Yes, community development has certified it's being sufficient. Because of that, I'll entertain a motion to continue this hearing two weeks later. And so that's procedurally how you do all that. In practice, of course... I'm sorry. Practice, of course, you know, hearings like this often get continued anyhow. You take testimony and then there's more later. And so it sometimes happens no matter what. But mechanically, that's how you would do it, satisfy the charter and also to implement this concept that you directed about the automatic continuance business.
Mr. Keter?
Thank you. Just a very quick question clarification about withdrawals of petitions. I think this is what the language says, but my understanding, the one time we've dealt with a withdrawal of petition while I've been here, it was one landowner had enough property to be in the 20%, filed the petition, withdrew it. If, for example, it's five or six owners that join together to be the 20%, it requires all of them to withdraw it. It's not just that one person who would drop them down to below the 20% threshold could scuttle a petition. I think the way it's written is that everybody who signs the petition has to sign the withdrawal of the petitions. Is that... you're kind of nodding like you hadn't actually contemplated that scenario, but is that the intent of the language?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked the question because in the past, I think we've had protests that have been... only one protest and all the owners have signed. Has that been the practice?
I think if you look at paragraph F, it says...
Probably both ways.
Per ensens.
Let's... if you'd give them a chance to answer, please.
Mr. Johnstone says we've had it both ways. We've had a single protest with the sufficient multiple people that equaled 20% on one document, and we've had multiple documents that, when added together, made the cut. I'm glad you asked the question because whatever you do, you want to make it clear. It would seem to me that, you know, I can't withdraw a petition that other people have also signed. I... you know, that somehow seems wrong. It would seem to me you'd have to articulate that because while it's true that my signature made the petition get to the 20%, it was a single document that came to you. Now, you could articulate it any way you want, actually, and because this is... you're implementing a procedure, you could detail that, and you could say, in the event of a protest signed by multiple owners, then a rescission of that protest must be by all of the owners or all the people signing. Or in that of rescission to have legal effect on the council voting requirements, must rescind a sufficient amount of property to result in less than 20% remaining. I mean, you know, that's how you'd write it, to make it happen either way.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
In paragraph F, I think we've addressed that. It says, may be rescinded only in a written instrument signed by the same person, per ens persons, as the protest. So that covers us there, that everyone has to agree to rescind it.
I think that's probably true. Where you've got a...
So...
Where you've got a document where a bunch of people sign one document, seems to... I mean, that's how I... I hadn't drilled down to this level of detail when I was writing it, but I think that that's exactly how you'd render it, such that if you had multiple single protests that added up, you know, I can withdraw one, and it might be enough and it might not be enough to bring it below the 20%. In a way, that's fine. The 20% is the rule that you apply, and if there's still 20%, even after somebody rescinds, then you keep going. If strategically, the protesters, you know, put everybody on one protest, then that was their strategy decision. And, okay, you have one person that wants to withdraw, but all of them on that single document need to. You know, it probably makes sense, whatever we do, for there to be... we often upstairs at community development, we'll have little handouts that say, okay, if you're going to apply for a variance, here's what you need to know. And it wouldn't be the worst thing to have, no matter what, whatever ends up happening here, some guidance like that, so that people, not telling them what to do, but understanding the rules.
Mr. Dahl, you've talked about a protest petition. There isn't a petition per se, is that...
Protest document.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Additional comments, questions? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At present, within the city charter, there's nothing that precludes council from continuing a hearing for any reason that we choose.
Not at all. That's correct.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Before I close the public hearing and we go to a motion, are there any more questions that you wish to ask staff? I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 13-2019, an ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Wheatridge Code of Laws concerning the Right of Protest Procedure for Rezoning Decisions on Second Reading. Order it published and then take effect 15 days after publication with the following Section 1.7, add a new A to read prior to the commencement of the hearing. Adjust subsequent letter... following letters. Page 3, section, figures 26, 112.1, figure E, add the corner properties. End of that.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Keter. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My biggest concern about this is as it relates to our mandate to postpone a hearing that's been properly scheduled, and both citizens and property owners may be able to attend that particular meeting but may not be able to attend other meetings. And by tying our hands to postpone a hearing that's been duly noticed, that's the biggest concern for me as it relates to this particular proposal. So I would like to suggest an amendment to Item D of Part 7, which is on page 2. On the third line, it states, council shall act, and replace the word shall with the word may.
There is an amendment? Is there a second to the amendment? Second? We have a... an amendment and a second. Do we have discussion on the amendment? Ms. Hoppe?
My concern would be changing the word from shall to may will deteriorate the transparent and inclusive process. So then it is, well, city council might do this or they might do that. And I think that the point of this was to try to make sure that it was a really clear path.
Further discussion? Mr. Urban?
I would say that rezonings and real estate development are, by definition, not a clear path in any respect as it relates to one particular project over another. And so by tying our hands to do it in this way, extending the process and basically creating a property right out of the letter of protest by allowing that time to enter into the process, that, I think, is detrimental to the process and is not fair to the citizens that have filed the letter of protest and who then have to endure two weeks of influence by whoever it may... whoever may come. So if we... we're currently allowed in our charter to postpone a hearing whenever we want, that there's nothing precluding us from doing so, why wouldn't we allow ourselves that flexibility as it comes to different developments? This is a suggestion that we've learned from this most recent process, and that's why we're here today, is because we're learning the lessons that we got over the past year. So instead of tying our hands here, using the word may gives us a guidance as to what to do, but doesn't restrict us in the future.
Additional discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council on the amendment?
Motion fails 3 to 4 with council members Hoppe, Weaver, Keter, and Pond voting no.
Okay, then we are back to the original motion.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, sir.
Of the maker of the motion? You had suggested the addition of a new A under 7, reading prior to the commencement of the hearing, but I believe that that would be a sentence fragment because it... if it were a letter A, were you intending it instead to amend the next-to-last line of 7, replacing no later than the hearing with prior to commencement of the hearing?
Yes.
Does the second understand that? Whoever seconded that?
Sorry, yes.
Okay.
Would you read that, please, one more time?
As I understand it, the amendment to the motion to approve the ordinance that Ms. Hoppe read would change the next-to-last line in paragraph 7, which presently reads... the sentence reads, the written protest such change shall be submitted to the city council no later than the hearing on the proposed rezoning ordinance. And what I'm hearing is that we would strike no later than and insert prior to commencement of.
Are you saying no later than prior to the commencement of?
No, you would strike no later than, which is existing code language, and replace those three words with prior to commencement of.
Well, he's got prior.
So the sentence would read, shall be submitted to the city council prior to commencement of the hearing on the proposed rezoning ordinance. Is that what you were intending?
Yes.
I have a question.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you. So that language in that sentence there comes directly from the charter as it relates to this particular section. So that language in there, that...
Ah, mhm.
So how are we amending charter language in a code section?
Well, it's repeated in the code.
Because we can't just say this code section actually means...
Yeah.
Something else.
Yeah, it should probably be its freestanding letter A.
Mr. Dahl?
Yep.
Would it work if we said, shall be submitted to the city council no later than the commencement of the public and then continue with hearing on the...
Councilmember Urban's concern is deeper than that, in fairness. What the code is doing here is repeating what the charter says.
What the code is doing here is repeating what the charter says. And it's absolutely true that you can implement the charter, and that's what you're doing here, and it doesn't bother me at all that the charter says, "No later than the hearing," and you later in code say, "Here's what 'no later than the hearing' means." You have the right to do that.
No later than the commencement of the hearing.
Right. You have the right to do that, but there's sort of a mechanical issue here. How do you do that? Do you do that in a code section that repeats the charter language, or do you do it in a separate section that says, "Here's what that means"? And I think, in fairness, you should do it in a separate subsection of the code that says, "Here's what that means," which gets me back to where Councilmember Hoppe was to begin with. I apologize. But you'll need to do more than just the sentence fragment. Maybe you do something like, "For the purposes of the...for the purpose of the charter requirement, the written protest must be submitted prior to the commencement of the hearing," something like that.
Can it be, "All protests shall be submitted prior to the commencement of the hearing"?
Sure, as its own letter A, as opposed to...
Letter A.
Yeah.
Should I reread my motion?
Would you? Thank you, I'm sorry to slow you down.
Yep. Commencement of the public hearing. Sorry, writing notes. I move to approve Council Bill Number 13-2019, ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Wheatridge Code of Laws concerning the Right of Protest Procedure for rezoning decisions on second reading. Order it published and then take effect 15 days after final publication with the following amendments. Section 1.7, addition new A will read, "All protests shall be submitted prior to the commencement of the public hearing." All letters subsequent following should be changed. Diagram under figures 26, 112.1, diagram E, the diagonal properties shall be added as is in diagram B.
Thank you.
Still a second.
And we have a confirmation with a second, Mr. Keter. We'll take additional discussion. Ms. Weaver.
I would like to introduce a friendly amendment, that we also address the communication regarding the protest process. And I would like to ask Mr. Dahl, because he brought this up, what...is this appropriate to the amendment at hand, or, excuse me, to the motion at hand?
Sure, you could have another subsection G that would say, something like, "The community development department shall maintain information materials explaining the procedure required for protests under this section," something like that. And they can do a handout.
Like, on the website, or just can we just say, they will...
I'd be inclined to leave it generic, because what you're doing is saying, you need to put together a kind of a handout sheet that says, you know, "Protests in Wheatridge," you know, fact sheet kind of thing, and that might make sense for the website, or just a handout, or, you know...
This is the top line? This is how it works? This is how you do it?
Yeah, yeah, sort of an FAQ kind of thing, and you see that occasionally in codes, and I'm fine with that, something like, "Community Development Department shall provide written guidance to the public for...shall provide written guidance to the public for describing the procedures for compliance with this section," because this section is all about how you file protest.
Would you like me to restate that?
Sure.
Are you making an amendment?
I am making an amendment.
Please make it in the form of an amendment.
Okay. I am making a friendly amendment that says, and it would be number G, that...
Actually, number H, since we've relabeled.
That the community development department shall provide written guidance to the public on procedures of protest.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a amendment and a second by Ms. Hoppe. Do we have discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council on the amendment?
Motion carries 7 to 0.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, you need, you all need to get those, all these motions to me in writing. That's part of your council rules.
I will follow up and send you all of them.
Okay. We have now, we are now on the main motion. Is there more discussion on the main motion? Mr. Keter?
Yeah, I just wanted to, several, a couple people talked about the idea of undue influence on a person who filed a protest. I actually believe we should be encouraging the developer and whoever has issues with the proposal to attempt to work together and resolve those issues, and that those kind of disputes are best resolved if they can actually be resolved between the parties involved, as opposed to everybody drawing lines in the sand and asking us to make that decision. So that's, that and the potential and the spelling out of the withdrawal procedures are actually one of the primary reasons I'm supporting this.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you. This is an effort to continue to grow our inclusivity in our community and our transparency, and oftentimes, we hear a lot that citizens feel uninformed or unincluded, and so I think that this process is good for all of our citizens. And oftentimes, it's used as a gotcha tactic, and was that the intention when the charter was originally written? I don't know if that was really the intention, or if it's just a, just the effect of what happens, but I think all citizens benefit when our playing ground is leveled, and I think that this levels the playing ground.
Additional discussion on the motion? Mr. Pond.
I'd just thank folks for engaging in the conversation coming in tonight. I think some of the comments have helped us advance this a little bit more, and I do think, just to be responsive to some of those comments, that it actually, in fact, I think, withholds, or kind of holds on to some of the ability to quote, "Do it at the last minute," because we're still allowing protest all the way up to the hearing, and I think that's significant. And I think, obviously, I think the comments about clarity and predictability, I think, have already been raised on, up here, and I agree with those as well.
Additional discussion on the motion? Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The idea that this is leveling the playing field, I just, I don't agree with, and the idea that more foot traffic and more hearings equates to inclusivity, it just doesn't ring true either, and in my mind, this delays a process unnecessarily. We, as council, can make that judicial decision to postpone a hearing if the merit, if the situation merits it, if a council member's absent, or if there's some information that we need to receive, or if a letter of protest has been filed. Those are all valid reasons to consider postponing a hearing, but this ties our hands, and that's, I can't support it in any way, and I'd be surprised if it stands, because to me, it is an impediment to the rights of the citizens, and there are some good parts in here, I don't disagree with the need to kind of understand where the letter of protest radiuses are and whatnot, but this is not a good bill, and I will not be supporting it.
Additional discussion? Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, yeah, Ms. Davis is missing tonight. So I would just kind of like to make a few comments, because I'm actually on the fence about this. Planning Commission did vote this down during their public hearing discussing it, and their reasoning was, because it will be less efficient with too many continuances, and I worry about some of the things that Mr. Urban has brought up, as far as if there were a public protest, and it automatically sets us into a continuance of the hearing, and then say there, if it's rescinded, and then somebody else potentially comes and submits another protest, or, you know, adjacent. I think that the intention behind this is good, and I really like a lot of the changes that have happened, or come out of this and the discussion that has. We've seen a lot of instances in the last year where we've had either a public protest or a divisive subdivision or rezoning, and the tension in the room is palpable, we can all feel it, and sometimes that really prevents good discussion, and when emotions are running high, we, I feel like we don't have a good space to think logically and make those good decisions. And because of all of the changes that we've seen this evening, and given that we've made a lot of amendments, we've had a lot of discussions and talked about some issues, I would make a motion to continue this item for further discussion, get the amendments on paper, and potentially have another discussion with a full body.
There's a motion to continue? Is there a second?
Second.
Going to give Mr. Urban this one. Is there discussion on the motion to continue?
I was just a little delayed in that, just because I didn't know if that superseded this motion, or if that was allowed, that's, it wasn't out of...
At the moment, you got a motion to approve, and I think it's always proper to continue an item before you've acted on it, so sure.
Would the clerk please, or, is this a debatable motion?
I really don't know. I'm sorry.
All right, just do.
I don't see a reason you shouldn't.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Matthews?
I, do we want to set an end date for the continuance, or just let it float?
I had assumed it would be just next meeting, because that's usually the...
And just restate the motion that we continue to the next meeting or wherever, so people out there know too, when it's going to come up.
I mean, if we're going to be making that many changes, I think that having a discussion of study session, so we can kind of hash some of the details out a bit further, because it sounds like a lot of us agree with the intent behind this ordinance, but not necessarily the details as of right now.
I think it'd be important for then, for your motion to be clear. I sort of heard it as, you know, we're, we've had the hearing and motion and amendments, and you're kind of ready to act, and if there's a continuance, that's great, I don't have a problem with that, it's just that my assumption was, that's a continuance to the next meeting's agenda, and you see it typed up, and then you, and do it then. If your intention is that it get written up and then continued for action, but meanwhile scheduled on a study session, that, you would need to make that clear.
If it were to come to a regular business meeting, and you're going to be writing it up, I don't want that to be an undue burden on you, for one, and two, I would also like to see us somehow address an issue of some, like, not triggering too many continuances, or not allowing for a public protest to be, yeah, validated and then rescinded, and then another one to be validated, you know, because I feel like that that weaponizes the code in a completely different manner.
Councilmember Pond, I think.
Mr. Pond.
I just want to make that clarification. I understand the amendment, the kind of conditions of the motion to include the bright line designation of "before the hearing," so there can't be a recirculation of it once, once that moment has been reached. Is that a correct statement?
That's correct. That's what you did in that amendment.
But if we were to be continuing, would that not trigger another hearing? It would just be that one time?
No, because you've got a single bright line for submission of protests, and that's at the beginning of the hearing.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
So is this a, to continue to a date certain, or to a date indefinite?
To continue to our next regular business meeting that we are able to schedule.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Will, Mr. Pond?
I mean, if it's a matter of, we've made a lot of edits, and we've got a bunch of amendments to motions, and we're just going to write it up again, and then continue this discussion, finish this vote, that, you know, with a clean, with a clean document, then I'm okay with that. Otherwise, I, I mean, I think we could continue the discussion now if there's any other reason, but if it's just about seeing it written down, then I guess, at the next business meeting, then I guess I'm okay with that.
Further discussion? On the continuance, Ms. Hoppe.
Yeah, and I just want everybody to know that I'm looking at the future council agendas, and the next regular business meeting being September 23rd, and it is not an extremely full agenda. It currently has three items on it.
Additional discussion? Will the clerk please poll the council on the continuance?
Motion carries 7 to 0.
Thank you.
Just in time for kickoff.
We will move to item number 3. Mr. Keter, introduce this item, please.
Thank you. Resolution Number 51-2019, a resolution approving a two-lot subdivision with variances for lot width and lot size for property zoned Residential 3 R3, located at 2810 and 2816 Benton Street, case number WS-19-05/Horton subdivision. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a two-lot subdivision with lot width and size variances. The purpose of the request is to allow for the two existing single-family homes to be contained on separate lots, with one also encompassing a carriage house which currently functions as a legally non-conforming third dwelling unit.
Thank you. This is a, will be a resolution by council. It is a public hearing, it is a quasi-judicial public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. If you intend to give testimony on this matter, will you please stand and raise your hand, and I will swear you in? So if the Hortons are here, if you all want to speak on this, you need to, okay. Do you promise or affirm to tell the truth as you understand it in this matter? If you do, please say, "I do." You may sit down. Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We do. Our planner, Stephanie, will give a presentation.
Thank you. Please continue.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. For the record, my name is Stephanie Stevens, Planner with the City of Wheatridge Community Development Department. Here tonight to present to you case WS-1905, approval, request for approval of a two-lot subdivision with variances to lot width and lot size for property that is zoned R3 Residential 3, located at 2810 and 2816 Benton Street. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the subdivision regulations, and the digital presentation. The property is within the City of Wheatridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and City Council has jurisdiction to hear this case. So on the screen, you'll see a 2018 aerial of the subject property outlined in teal. The site is located between 28th and 29th Avenue, just west of Sheridan. It's approximately 13,300, 13,300 square feet, and it was subdivided, subdivided in 1890 under the Lakeside re-subdivision. The lot itself currently contains two single-family homes and a carriage unit, so a third dwelling unit is present on the property. This aerial photograph actually shows a fourth dwelling unit, which was a converted chicken coop, which has recently been demolished. The structures on the property were built generally between the years of 1917 and 1970, and they predate, predate the city's zoning regulations. The carriage unit, therefore, is legal, non-conforming, as existing today, because it was built prior to our regulations taking place. The zoning on the subject property is Residential 3 R3, as you can see in the orange on the screen. It's primarily surrounded by similar zoning, similar uses, residential uses. To the west, south, and east are Residential 3 zoning, and to the north is R1C, which is a lower-density residential district and contains single-family homes. is a lower-density residential district and contains single-family homes. The purpose of the request tonight is to create legal lots for two primary single-family homes as they exist today. Normally, City Council does not see a two-lot subdivision, but because of the unique circumstances in that variances are requested to accommodate a two-lot subdivision in this case, the variances are what trigger the major subdivision process and the reason that City Council is reviewing this tonight. Because of the history of the site, there are several nonconformities related to setbacks. The structures were developed right over lot lines, and the lots are undersized, but the subdivision before you tonight improves and does not increase these nonconformities. The proposal before you is to allow the two single-family homes, one that would also encompass the existing carriage house, to be contained on separate lots, and the central lot line has been configured to align with the existing fence line down the center. So this slide that's up on the screen now shows both the existing and proposed conditions. The current lot lines, as they exist today, the four lots are shown in teal, and the newly configured proposed lot lines are shown in red. The items that are, have variances tied to them also have an asterisk next to them. That's the lot width for both Lot One and Lot Two are under the required 60-foot width that's typically required in the residential three zone district. And then Lot One, which is on, towards the top of this, or I'm sorry, Lot Two, which is on the south side of the screen, or the bottom of the screen, is also requesting a variance for lot size due to it being under the 7,500 square feet that's typically required. Lot One is proposed to be larger because of the current configuration of the existing single-family homes. It also would allow the lot that still contains the carriage house to be larger in size and have appropriate setback, or meet appropriate setback requirements for the carriage home. And by assessing the lots based on single-family standards, rather than, say, duplex lots or the one that has two home, two independent dwellings on it, by addressing it with single-family lot standards and proposing the variances that way, this would preclude any allowance for a second unit on Lot One if that carriage home was ever demolished, so incrementally decreasing those nonconformities over time. We'll go through a couple of images really quickly, just so you can see what the current existing single-family homes on the sites look like. This picture on the screen is directly of 2816 Benton Street, the northern lot. Looking southeast, you can kind of see 2810 in the distance. It is important to note as well that curb gutter and sidewalk is in place, so no public improvements are required with this proposed subdivision. This is just a shot down the center of the two properties showing that fence line and where the newly proposed lot line would be proposed at as well. And then this shot is from the rear alley, looking northwest. This shows the carriage unit from the alley view and the old location of that converted chicken coop that was recently demolished. So the applicant was required to go through the full process. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the referral to outside agencies and completed an internal review with various departments. We did not receive any concerns from outside agencies. All servicing agencies can serve the property. Public Works and Planning have found the plat to be approvable. Planning Commission did recommend approval of the variances and the subdivision at the Planning Commission hearing in August. And then for this hearing, we sent out the 15-day notice to adjacent property owners as well as postings on the site, and we did not receive any letters of opposition or And with that, again, this is a unique circumstance coming before City Council for the city, for, because of the need for variances, and variances as in our code do require a supermajority vote, which would be six votes tonight, to be able to be approved. Variances are reviewed case, on a case-by-case basis, based on the seven criteria that are listed in the code, which has been provided in a more detailed analysis in your staff report. And in this case, staff is recommending approval because the request meets the majority of the seven listed criteria of the code. We see the benefit of preserving the single-family homes as well as the single-family environment of the neighborhood. It improves the nonconforming situation, promotes a logical lot layout, as well as promotes homeownership opportunities. And so with that, staff is recommending approval of the subdivision with variances. And this concludes my presentation for the night. Mr. Horton, the applicant, is here to speak a few words, and I am available for any questions.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Mr. Horton, please, if you'd like to come to the podium.
Excuse me, I just have a total new replacement.
Oh, I'm sorry. Take your time.
I don't want to be disrespectful by wearing shorts. You have long pants or not.
Give us your name and your name and address, just for the record, please.
Mayor and council, Terry Horton. The property is 2816 Benton. 2810 does not exist as far as public records go. My home address is 28, is 1295 Cody Street in Lakewood. Trying to make this short, there's three houses on the property. Each has their own gas line, sewer line, water line. I want to re-subdivide it, divide it into two houses on one lot, one lot house on the other lot, with the property line running down the middle. I'm a Vietnam vet. We bought this house 20 years ago on a 203K loan program, which the Veterans Administration provided, and they provided fix-up money to fix the property up and bring it up to code. So to get that loan 20 years ago, we had to upgrade electrical, plumbing, electrical, the foundation, the furnaces and everything, and that was done. And that loan was approved, and the costs of all that repair was built into the loan, which was wonderful for us, you know, just being right out of the Navy. So that provided, brought everything up to code, and I'm sure that if there's any concerns here from neighbors, this is R3 zoning, but this re-subdivision agreement requires me to agree that no triplex can ever be built on the property. We considered that, putting up a triplex and tearing down everything. I don't think the neighborhood would fit in the neighborhood, and I don't think the neighborhood would like it, so we're not going to do that. And the subdivision requires that I sign a statement that says basically that this can, I can't build a triplex, and nobody that I ever sell the property to can build a triplex. Is that right? So that's going to be better for the neighborhood, for me and for others. The rentals, these three houses, we lived in the big one for five years, and three houses have been rentals for the last 15 years. Sure. I just didn't want to speak right directly into it and get the chatter. The rentals have been, they've been rentals for the last 15 years. What I would like to do is sell off one house, the 2810 house, and take that money and pay off the mortgage on the large house and keep that one, because I've worked for myself my whole life. I don't have any retirement, neither does, my wife has a small one, and so this is going to give us an additional $4,000 a month retirement, you know, for, you know, forever, really. And that's about double what our Social Security is. So this allows to pay off the big house, and then we're going to keep that house, but we're not going to rent it out. Rentals are inherently, you know, messy and, you know, hard to control tenants. And for 15 years, I know exactly how hard it is to control tenants and keep things clean and neat. So we're going to keep the house, but we're going to rent it out and get a management company, because my wife and I want to retire. We want to be snowbirds and get a place down in Florida, and been a long time coming. So I don't want to have to mess with this property. So we're going to get a management company to take care of it, and I've talked to management companies, and they're, they're right on top of the tenants. They will not allow them to leave any messes up in the yard or anything. So that's going to benefit the neighborhood and the neighbors, and that'll mean that it remains a nice property, like it is right now. We've just, we've done a lot of fix-up in it. So we'll make sure that it's kept up. I guess that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
We'll, I guess, just take a seat close, close to the microphone, so in case we do have any questions. But I will open it now to the council for questions of staff or the applicant. Do we have questions? Ms. Weaver?
I just wanted to verify the language that, about the triplex. Could you just?
Sure. So residential three zoning would allow for, basically, they could tear down and build a, three attached townhomes on the property. The square footage, by reviewing it on single-family lot standards and keeping it to the 7,500-square-foot lot size, that ultimately reduces it to only allow for a single-family home in the future.
So how does that get recorded when it, for the next owner? I'm just curious.
That's strictly based on lot size requirements. So for anyone that would come in...
So it's not the agreement signed, it's more?
It's not. It's just inherently written in our zoning code.
Gotcha, gotcha. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. Earlier, I passed out to council and to the city clerk a Google Maps picture, and I chose that because it is aerial view, and it shows things better than just a single picture would from the front. And when you look at that map, what you're looking at, this property was located and originally was a farmhouse at 32nd and Teller. And the farmhouse is the light-colored roof you see, which would be on the one corner there. And the big house right to the right of that farmhouse did not exist, and the two houses under construction did not exist. And those homeowners came to us asking for variances. And at the time, they told us that they wanted to have this to be a family plot, and they wanted to build the big house, and then the, where the two houses there are under construction right now would never be homes, that would be the family garden. And that's what we were told at the time. So we granted variances to allow them to put the one big house behind the existing farmhouse. And what we have now are four new, are four houses, and that was never going to happen. And so I'm concerned about all these promises that developers bring to us, and at this point in time, sir, I appreciate what you're trying to do, but you're a developer. I don't, I still don't understand how we ended up with these two new houses on the corner there, 38th Place and Teller, because they're certainly, when you go look at it, five feet apart. And I was actually looking at this for other reasons in the past and filed it away as far as for making future decisions on allowing variances that would allow you to put multiple houses in close proximity to each other in a residential neighborhood. And this is what happened to us about three years ago, three or four, and I was on, just after I was elected to council. And that's one of the things that concerns me is, we can say that subdivisions can't change in this, but we do know that things change. Our apartment house on 44th, our Fruitdale Lofts, was supposed to be forever an educational site and lot, and I just, there's no guarantees that things won't change. And so I'm not sure when you tell us that there can only be a single house on there when we already have two, I, I take that with a grain of salt, because I've seen those promises change. The other one I gave you was a flag house, and just to show you what happened...
Point of order, Mr. Matthews. This is time for questions, not time for discussion. A motion hasn't been made.
So I question, how can you guarantee us that things won't change? And I'm using this as examples that things do change. We've made that statement that it's always going, if anything happens, there's just going to be a single house there.
Let's give staff an opportunity to answer, if you'd like to.
Since that predates Ms. Stevens' time here, I can, I can take that question, Mr. Matthews. You're absolutely correct. The, the owner of the property at, the property at 32nd and Teller represented that it was their intent initially to use that as for, they were going, it was going to be a multi-generational situation where a family with some kids built the new house, which is the larger house that you see on the east side of the facing 32nd, and the parents were going to occupy the house next door, which I, I know that was at least initially the case. I don't know if it is or not, or currently or not, but the rear property, I don't know that it received any variances. I don't recall that. But I, just to be clear, in terms of what staff communicated on that, it was, it was clear that they were entitling a development lot. And again, I don't believe it had variances, but I can't say that absolutely. It was the representation of the owner of the property that their initial intent was going to be to use it as part of the estate for gardening or what have you. That clearly did change quickly, but we certainly didn't represent in any manner that it wasn't getting entitled to be developed under the existing zoning, and the zoning didn't change in that case at all. So as Stephanie said, on the, on the current situation, unless council were to change the minimum lot area for single-family homes versus duplexes versus triplexes, the lots in question that would be created if council approves this subdivision plat this evening are only big enough to allow a single-family home. And we don't currently allow accessory dwellings in any fashion, so if that carriage house were to go away, they'd be restricted to having a single-family home. So if anything were to get torn down or changed on this property, it would be, the current zoning, absent a change to either the zoning or a change to the development regulations, would be one single-family home on each of the two lots.
Does the current R3 allow for two separate houses on one lot?
It does not.
So in essence, we're creating an ADU if we allow this?
The ADU exists and is legally non-conforming, if you want to call it an ADU. Again, we don't really recognize ADUs in our code, but it exists and it's legally non-conforming.
We've been told it's going to be a rental. What's going to be the purpose of the back house there on the alley?
The same as it is today.
Which is a rental.
That is the way it is today, yes.
Additional questions for staff?
Can I say something?
Yes, sir, you may, but you need to come to the microphone. Or you can hand him the microphone.
Thank you. I think you mentioned that I'm a developer. I'm not a developer. I just bought, I've been a woodworker my whole life, got out of the Navy, bought this house for a rental property for, I mean, for a retirement. I'm not a developer. I'm not trying to develop anything. I just want to have, sell one house so that I can use that money to pay off the mortgage on the other, the existing property, which would be the other house and the carriage house in the back, and then have the opportunity to rent out both of those houses and get $4,000 a month for rental for our retirement. That's the extent of it.
Thank you. Additional questions? Mr. Keeter, a motion is in order. Oh, wait a minute. I'm going to close the public, Keeter, and a motion is in order.
Thank you. I move to approve resolution number 51-2019, a resolution approving a two-lot subdivision with variances for lot width and lot size for property zoned residential three, R3, located at 2810... three, R3, located at 2810 and 2816 Benton Street, case number WS-19-05/ Horton subdivision, for the following reasons. One, city council has conducted a proper public hearing that meets all public notice requirements as required by Section 26-109 and 26-407 of the Code of Laws. Two, the requested subdivision has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which has forwarded its recommendation of approval. Three, the subdivision plat has been found in compliance with Article 4 of Chapter 26 of the Code of Laws. Four, all agencies can provide services to the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense. Five, the variance requested is in compliance with the majority of the review criteria.
Second.
Uh, second by Ms. Hoppy. Um, we will have now discussion on the motion. Mr. Matthews.
If the intent on this is to create two single lots that eventually will be two single homes, why would we not rezone that to R1?
Thank you. Is there additional, uh, discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? Clerk, please poll the council.
Motion carries six to one with Councilmember Matthews voting no.
Thank you. Uh, we will go to item number four on our agenda. Mr. Keter, will you introduce item number four?
Thank you. Council Bill Number 15-2019, an ordinance amending Chapter 26, Article 8 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to add floodplains in the Sloans Lake watershed to the city's floodplain maps as a local flood hazard area. Issue, the Sloans Lake flood hazard area delineation has been adopted by both the Colorado Water Conservation Board and the Mile High Flood District. The FHAD is now ready to be adopted as a local flood hazard area. This requires an amendment to Chapter 26, Article 8 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws pertaining to floodplain control.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the time and place for a public hearing. Uh, may I please have a motion, Mr. Keter?
Thank you. I move to approve Council Bill Number 15-2019, an ordinance amending Chapter 26, Article 8 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to add floodplains in the Sloans Lake watershed to the city's floodplain maps as a local flood hazard area on first reading. Order is published. Public hearing set for Monday, September 23rd at 7:00 PM in city council chambers, and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication.
Second. Motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Will the clerk please poll the council?
I'm pretty sure I cleared it. Let's see. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce Agenda Item Number Five?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to award a contract and approve subsequent payment of $83,000 to KC Construction Incorporated of Castle Rock, Colorado, for the Wheat Ridge Police Evidence Building Improvements and approve a 10% contingency in the amount of $8,300.
Second, whoops. Mr. Goff, do we have a presentation on this?
We do. Our Parks and Rec Director, Karen O'Donnell.
Please continue.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The intent of this project is to obtain the services of a general contractor to add a second floor within one side of the existing police evidence structure to create additional storage. Modifications will include structural, mechanical, and electrical additions and improvements as defined in the drawings and specifications for this project. Uh, the police evidence building is quickly running out of space to house the quantity of materials that need to be stored for oftentimes an indeterminate amount of time. The current building was constructed to utilize all but one quarter of the second floor of available space, and this project will complete the buildout of the second floor and provide much-needed increase in square footage, um, that will help now and in the future. So, if you have any questions?
Thank you. Uh, before we go into questions from council, I want to invite anyone from the public to speak. I don't have anybody signed up on this. Is anyone, uh, here that would like to speak on this item number five? Seeing none, we will, uh, go to questions from council of staff. Are there questions that, uh, council has? Seeing none, uh, motion is in order, Ms. Dozeman.
I move to award a contract and approve subsequent payment of $83,000 to KC Construction Incorporated of Castle Rock, Colorado, for the Wheat Ridge Police Evidence Building Improvements and approve a 10% contingency in the amount of $8,300.
Second.
Uh, second by Ms. Weaver. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Someone might want to call the police. I think I was robbed.
Motion carries seven to zero.
I hope they didn't get anything of great value, Mr. Urban. Um, thank you. We will go to Agenda Item Number Six. Mr. Urban, will you int- introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution, uh, Resolution Number 52-2019 is a resolution approving the acceptance of Justice Assistance Grant Funds in the amount of $10,440 to be combined with budgeted funds to upgrade three secure, three security cameras covering the police department parking lot.
Thank you. This is a resolution. Uh, Mr. Goff, do we have any?
No presentation. Um, our interim chief, Mr. Pickett, is here this evening. If you have any questions for him.
All right. We have no, um, no questions. I, uh, I have, no one signed up to speak on this. On my signup sheet, is there anyone from the public here who would like to speak on this item? Uh, seeing none, we will, um, conclude that and go to any questions of council on this item. Uh, okay. I don't see any. Mr. Urban, may I have a motion on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 52-2019, a resolution approving the acceptance of Justice Assistance Grant Funds in the amount of $10,440 to be combined with budgeted funds to upgrade three security cameras covering the police department parking lot.
Second.
There is a motion and a second by Ms. Dozeman. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
That concludes our six agenda items on, uh, on our agenda. I would like to go now to City Managers Matters. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I literally just got back in town this afternoon, so I don't, I'm still catching up. But, um, just a couple of quick announcements. Um, good news, we finally, uh, have hired a public works director. So, um, our third round took us, third time's the charm. Um, but, uh, he won't be starting until the first of November. Give him some time to, um, finish some projects at his job in North Dakota and also move his family here. So, we're excited to, um, have him onboard. We'll get a, a press release out when the date comes sooner, so you can learn more about him. Um, I did receive a little bit of an update on the Rocky Mountain Bottle Company, uh, noise issue when I was out of town, um, last week. Praxair, as I mentioned in a couple of updates ago, was out, um, on the site, um, at the end of last month, um, looking at their, their system. They gave a proposal to Rocky Mountain Bottle Company on some fixes that they could make to mitigate the noise. But they were able to make some, some very short-term fixes, um, to the system. Um, they adjusted the cycling of the, uh, the equipment. Um, I wish I had a better word for the name of the equipment. I don't know what it is. It's an air generator or?
Oxigenator.
Oxigenator, thank you. Uh, so they changed some of the cycling on that, which may have helped some of the noise. And then they also, uh, modified, um, how the piping went in from the oxygenator into the plant. Um, the piping was vibrating because it wasn't installed correctly. So, hopefully, some of those short-term fixes is helping, but they also are working on some of the long-term fixes. So, um, I'll give you an update as soon as I, I hear more.
Thank you. Uh, City Attorneys Matters, Mr. Dahl.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go to elected officials matters and start with our city clerk, Ms. Shaver.
I guess I don't have anything.
Okay. We'll go to elected official matters and start with Mr. Keter.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Urban.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Ms. Weaver.
Tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews. Pass. Ms. Dozeman?
Yes, I just wanted to remind everybody that the Farmers 5,000 is this Sunday, the 15th, um, at 9:00 AM. Pre-registration closes tomorrow at 2:00. Um, you can also sign up on race day. It's a little bit more expensive to register on race day, but it's a great community event. Um, they have a competition, uh, amongst the elementary schools. So, uh, whichever elementary school has the most participants show up, uh, gets either $500 as first prize, $250 for a second prize, and then books for the library for a third prize. So, come out and see us, even if you don't, if you, even if you don't run.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bond.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to ask council if they would support, um, a resolution supporting 1A, as was requested by our Sheriff Schrader today. Um, and I think that we have to have a majority to be able to do a, a resolution, right? Is that right? Do we have to have a majority to do a resolution supporting a, a ballot initiative?
You always have to have a majority to pass any resolution, but...
I mean, I'm sorry. I mean, like, a unanimous, I meant. Sorry.
Oh, no.
No.
No. Well, I, I don't know if we have a rule on that. No, I don't think there's any council rule on that. There's nothing in the charter.
Okay. So, I'd like to ask someone to support me in supporting a, a 1A resolution.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I'd like to move that, uh, city council, uh, makes a resolution in support of JFCO 1A.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Matthews.
I'm not convinced I can support anything until I've read it, and I haven't read it yet. I would think we should at least study and see what's in it and what all the broad-reaching effects are before we start supporting something.
Mr. Urban?
So, is this a, uh, resolution in support of, uh, the ballot question, or is it to have a resolution prepared for then, for us to vote on at the next meeting?
To have a resolution prepared for us to vote on the next meeting.
Okay. That makes a difference.
So, this is a motion in support of a resolution to, to, to vote on at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Will the clerk please poll the council?
And who was the second?
Mr. Keter.
Mr. Keter.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, council.
Did you have anything further?
No.
Okay. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, I attended the Ridge Fest, um, on Saturday. Great, uh, great afternoon. I'll tell you, I, I, it was a delight to be there. I spent a whole lot more time there than I thought I would because it was so enjoyable. And I want to thank the, the staff and the local works and the, um, city, city staff that, um, worked hard and volunteers to put that together. It's always a, uh, a very collaborative effort and, um, mostly collaborating with all of our residents and citizens that came down to enjoy it. So, thank you very much for, for that. Um, I will entertain a, we are going to go into a study session, uh, so I would entertain a motion to recess to a special study session.
Motion to recess to a special, special study session?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Uh, Ms. Hoppy.
Can, can we take a quick recess in between our recess?
Yes, we will do that.
Thank you.
Will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries, um, seven to zero. And who was the second?
Ms. Hoppy.
Ms. Hoppy.
No.
Okay. We are recessed for about 10 minutes, and then we will reconvene into our study session. Our first item of business, or actually I will open this up to citizen comment. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this tonight, but I'd like to open it up. Anyone here who would like to speak on this agenda item is free to come forth now. I don't see anyone, so we will go to item number one. Clear Creek Crossing PIF collecting agent agreement.
Public improvement fee.
I probably need you to turn your sign so that I can see your name. There you are.
Do you need my glasses, too?
No, that's fine. You're not familiar.
Come on now. I know. Well, thank you, council, for letting us hang out a little bit longer for our study session. We have, as I think Councilmember Hoppe mentioned a couple of weeks ago, we have a lot of items on our list, so this is kind of a timely one. And we've spoken about this before in the past, but I think there's been some new council members since we've talked about the public improvement fee collecting agent agreement. And with us tonight is Russell Newton. He's with Setter and Vanderwall. They are the legal representation for Longspeak Metropolitan District. And Russell is, has a quick verbal presentation, I believe. There's a couple of slides in your packet that you received. We're not going to actually show those, but you can refer to those when he's speaking. But I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to him and let him brief you on this, and I'll be available for any questions that you may have. Russ?
Mr. Newton, please continue.
Thank you. Here tonight, just to provide a brief explanation of the public improvement fee agreement and all it entails. So first, what is a PIF or PIF, Public Improvement Fee? It is a private covenant, just like any other covenant, that is put on property by the owner of the property and that runs with the land until something else is done with it. So it is, in this case, it is a covenant that requires that any sort of charge, in this case, there is a lodging PIF, a retail sales PIF, and a entertainment PIF. So any sales that occur on that property are collected and charged, and they go back to fund public improvements for that property. It has, the use of the revenue has to be tied to the land. And so although it's a private covenant, the purpose of it is public, and it is meant to benefit the property and the area with the public improvements. So what we are proposing is to have the city act as the collecting agent for the PIFs. You know, they are charged on purchases, they show up on receipts, just like a sales tax would. It's usually that bottom line you might see on a lot of newer developments. It's a very common tool to help finance public improvements. And we like, the city, the district prefers the city as the collecting agent because it eliminates the need for another party to participate in this process, don't need to duplicate efforts. The city has more experience and expertise in collecting revenue from charges. It's the PFA that the district has, the public finance agreement that the district executed with the city last year, requires that the PIFs be collected in the same manner as taxes. They are not taxes, but the process is the same. And so prefer to have an agent that has a lot of experience in doing this, and the city is a perfect candidate. It is also more efficient and seamless for the end-users or the retailers who are paying the charges. They are sending maybe two separate checks, but to the same location. They're dealing with the same staff and people when they're communicating about these things. There's more familiarity, so that really helps a lot. And also, nobody does anything for free, especially in the private sector, so you have a fee that would need to be charged and paid to a private firm that would collect this fee. The district would prefer that all of the funds collected stay within the public realm. So there is a 2% fee on any PIF funds collected that would go to the city to cover the city's costs and maybe then some. At full buildout and what we are anticipating in PIF revenue, that would be $20,000 annually, perhaps more. So just to wrap this up, I know that the city is a long-term partner in this, and as a long-term partner in the Clear Creek Crossing project, it's best suited to provide reliable, permanent, and transparent collection. And I'm free to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. We'll just open this up for questions from council. Are there questions about the PIF agreement out at Clear Creek Crossing? Mr. Matthews.
It's mentioned here in the preamble that part of this is to go in to pay for the hook ramps, which we had money from 2E. What's happening there, and how do those co-mingle?
Yeah, and you know, honestly, I read that on my flight coming home this afternoon, and that's not 100% accurate. I didn't see that before I went into the packet. None of the PIF revenues are going to the hook ramps. The hook ramps are being paid from the 2E dollars funds. So that was just, that was a...
Sorry, just to clarify, what it's going to do is the 2E funds are paid, but pursuant to that public finance agreement and the reimbursement agreement, the district is obligated to reimburse with bond proceeds anything above the $10 million.
That's true.
And so that's where the PIF revenue goes into, is that should it exceed, then the PIF revenue goes to pay the district's bonds, which then, which would then be in part paying for the reimbursement of the city's overage on the hook ramps. In addition to that, under the PFA, any PIF revenue that is not required for the bonds may be retained by the city. And that is another advantage to having the city aware and involved in the whole collection process.
Does the PIF go on indefinitely, or is there a termination date?
The credit PIF goes on until the bonds are paid, and if there is some language that would allow it to stay for the city's benefit, only the add-on PIF, that is at the discretion of the property owner. And you know, this is, the bonds are expected to last, I believe, 30 years, and so we really want that long-term partner to collect the PIF to allow us to pay off the bonds in an efficient manner and at a low cost. And one of the other concerns is the private accounting firms or whoever may perform this service, other than the city, they come and go, and getting a new firm up to speed and all that, it adds costs and inefficiencies, so...
Thank you.
The city will always be collecting taxes.
Additional questions for Mr. Newton?
We do have this scheduled for September 23rd to actually approve the PIF collecting agent agreement.
Okay. Mr. Keter.
So do we need a consensus to move forward to that, or is this just informational?
No, we would want to have consensus to move forward on this. Is there consensus on council to move forward on this item? There is consensus? So thank you, Mr. Newton.
Yes, thank you for your time.
I don't think we'll need anything else from you. Mr. Goff, is that conclude all we need to do?
Yes, thank you, on study session, yep.
Okay, then we are going to, Mr. Dahl, make sure that I use the right terminology here. We're going to return to our meeting.
Reconvene the regular city council meeting for the purpose of taking a motion which Ms. Hoppe has.
Okay, then I want to reconvene our city council meeting of September 9, 2019. Ms. Hoppe.
Mr. Mayor, can you wait until I change the tape, please?
I can do that.
And then say that line again. Hang on. Okay, now if you would...
Okay.
Restate your...
It is 9:21 p.m., and I am going to reconvene the city council meeting for the city of Huitridge, Colorado for September 9, 2019. I'm going to recognize Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney, city manager, and appropriate staff under Charter Section 5.7b1 and CRS 24-6-4024B to receive legal advice concerning pending litigation. Clark Sorrentino-McLeod.
Second.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, sorry. I further move to return to the open meeting at the closing executive session for the purpose of taking any formal action deemed necessary.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, I suggest we have the executive session in the lobby conference room. I can more easily record it. See you in there. We don't have to come back. We'll do a little record.